Alright, so we're gonna get started. Okay, so we'll maybe we'll just go around introduce ourselves for the people watching. And then I can talk about who all else is in the room. Start with you.
Great. Adrian Marty, urban field specialist at the Western Reserve Land Conservancy.
Alan Butler, housing maintenance program, Cleveland Heights City.
Eric Zamb, director of planning and development.
Hi everyone. Matt Zone, I'm the director of our urban programs at the Western Reserve Land Conservancy.
I'm Mayor Sarin. We've got a lot of people here in the room with us today, but this is sort of a work session. We're gonna be going through the data and the work that was done for the citywide property survey. We collaborated with Western Reserve Land Conservancy and several other communities to get, you know, inventory and a current state of our properties in the city. And we're looking forward to taking a look at this. We've got council vice president Russell on Zoom right now. We've got council members Larson, Petrus, Cobb, and council president Kuta here in the room with us as well. And more staff from planning and development and communications here. Oh, and the clerk, Clerk Ballister is with us today as well for this work session. And we're looking forward to the information. So I don't think that I'm going to take a lot of time on this, but I do wanna see if we can share the screen for Councilwoman Russell.
I think you have to let her in first.
Oh, she's she's in.
It says waiting room.
Oh, let me let me make sure. Okay.
Yeah, I think she is in the waiting room.
Okay. Here. And then.
Okay, that's right there.
There you go. There we go. Alright, so Councilwoman Russell has now joined us. And from here, we're going to close this. And I'm gonna turn it over to Adrian to take us through this presentation.
Before we begin, Mayor, if it's okay, first of all, Mayor, I don't know members of council and and city officials, it's my name is Matt Zone and it's such a delight to to be with you. I've been with the land conservancies for four years. Prior to that, I spent nineteen years as a member of Cleveland City Council. And I know that when the Western Reserve Land Conservancy did this same type of activity with the city of Cleveland in 2015, as a member of council, I was able to use that data to really assist and help residents. That's what this is about. This is not a punitive approach to code enforcement. This is a proactive approach to how you build strategies and policies to help the constituents who live in the city. We've done over two dozens throughout the state of Ohio. In fact, we've even done some as far down as in Georgia. The reason for the creation of our property inventory portfolio was really as an outgrowth of in 2008, when the foreclosure crisis was really rearing its ugly head. A lot of people were going underwater and losing their property. And then in 2010, when the economy tanked, we started to do more around the creation and advocacy for land banks, better tools to help assist municipalities to better deal with a lot of the abandonment that was occurring. And the best way you can do that is have real good accurate data sets on what exists in the community. So we're really excited. We were approached by the First Suburbs Consortium to partner with three cities, Cleveland Heights, Euclid, and South Euclid. So we did all three of them jointly together, almost concurrently. Adrian is our project manager and led this this work. But we're gonna go through the presentation, Mayor, and members of council. And then maybe if we have some time for questions, we could talk about strategies approach. So I'd like to turn it over to Mike Ali. Adrian?
Great. So first, I'd just like to thank you to everyone who's involved in this project. This was fifteen thousand seven hundred twenty-five parcels and we did it. So congratulations. We took in data on every single parcel with an incredible team you built. And this integrity of the data is just great because of the training. Thank you all who are part of this training. So many city officials came to give momentum to the surveyors. And so they were equipped to move through the parcels and understand some of those variables that we'll go over today. And so this is our story map. This is a part of the product we produce that visualizes this huge data set and makes it accessible to public officials and really residents of each community. We start with an introduction to kind of set the stage and show how every parcel was overviewed. This is actually extending on the 2017 project with a few of the communities involved. So that's actually a really important part of this process is making sure we can go in every few years to start to understand how the community is evolving. This is a map that places the communities, the sponsors, and then links to the communities involved. Your website is there. And we present the methodology. This is a link to the survey questions. So you can click on this and every single question is able to be linked there. And you can go through and see the exact nested questions for every single question that was taken, every variable. So the entire project had twenty-five trained surveyors. There was, I believe, eight from Cleveland Heights. And so we are showing the Regrid app. This is the app we use. It's the geographic geographic information system map and database that we use. The app collects this data. It is pushed to the cloud. And surveyors see this information come up in real time, which increases the efficiency of this information coming in. This image is a great example of the process. So every surveyor is on the public right of way and they're moving through residential areas, taking in information on every single parcel. They use small tablets and the process starts when you take a photo. So you take that photo of the image of the parcel and then we start to decide the categories. So here we have the categories that are available. Occupied structure, vacant structure, vacant lot, a park, parking lot. With adjacent, this is when a building footprint will move across a parcel line and then other. We move from that structure into classifying its apparent use. So residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, mixed, and other. Here's the grading system for each structure. It's an A through F designation. This image shows a B. So overall, it's structurally sound, but it's porch and siding created use and maintenance. So here's the criteria criteria for potential code violations that we may see on a home. Broken boarded windows or doors, the roof fence siding condition, illegal dumping, improper vehicles that may be parked on the lawn, sidewalk condition, and lawn and landscape condition. This image shows a D graded vacant structure. Now I think we'll move to Cleveland Heights section. Here's an intro describing really the incredible architecture of your community. It moves into the data analysis. And we can start to zoom in and move through the map. Here are the survey category results. Yeah, the story map is very dynamic. So you can move into and click on some of these charts and they'll come up. So that's easier to see. As you can see, occupied structure was ninety-two percent of all parcels surveyed. Coming in second was vacant lots at three point five percent. Vacant structures, two point three. That with adjacent designation, less than one. And followed by parking lot and parks. You can just click right out of that chart. Yeah, it's followed by the narrative. So we talk about how many parcels were shown to be vacant structures and percentage wise. Really high percentage of occupied structures and residential structures in the community. Here's the grading for the occupied structures. So as you can see from this chart, really high grades. As and Bs are almost ninety percent of all houses in your community.
That that's a good statistic. I mean, you know, nearly ninety percent of all structures in Cleveland House, Cleveland Heights are either A or B. And so you now have a much smaller subset that you can tackle, create strategies to get those up to better conditions.
Yeah, as Matt said, that's a great sign. Look at D and F. This is less than one percent of all occupied structures.
I think that really doesn't say a lot. The really, really poor condition properties, they have, you know, an impact on the properties surrounding them. But we only have so many. And it it sort of allows us to think of this as a more tackleable problem, manageable problem.
Mm-hmm.
So then, Councilwoman, we're gonna wait until the end.
More narrative describing the occupied structures and their grading. But again, this map is dynamic and you can kind of zoom in and look at specific areas and see certain neighborhoods and where they stand based on this chart to the left. So it's color coded and you can kind of see specific geographies of your community. This next part shows that A through F designation through photos. Here's vacant structures and their grades. So of those three hundred fifty-six, again, vacant structures are showing almost half are A and B. So even the vacant structure grades, C is also a great designation in terms of tackling that and transitioning that to a B. So pretty good position.
Is it a waiting room on the individual parcels?
Yeah, let's get into. Do you know, there it is. And we connected postal data, census data to that parcel. So I'll.
I don't know why it's not loading. Oh, we that data's out there and we use our GIS. So I mean, I don't know why it's not loading.
No. I think I'll reach out to Sadie.
Yeah.
And make this make sure that it can be put in. Yeah, because we just did that with the Alliance project. So yeah, we'll definitely link that.
Yep.
Here's an image of an F structure at the north side of the community. Next is structure use. So you can see there is ninety-six percent residential at fifteen thousand parcels. We break that down into single and multifamily homes. Commercial at one point seven, mixed one point five. That's mixed used and special. Here's the vacant land map. Five hundred forty-four vacant lots, making up three point five percent of total parcels.
I think that says a lot about how built out we are. See, very, very little opportunity for development without sort of demolition in this community. So present's a challenge, but it's a challenge that we have a better idea of now.
Yes. Adrian, is there a way for the vacant lots for there to be some sort of symbolism for the city-owned parcels?
We could change that designation, yeah. I mean, when this database, when you click on parcel specific director, it will tell you ownership information. And so the ones that appear, we can aggregate that data set and maybe highlight it a different color. And so maybe think about that and we could change that.
These are the conditions of those vacant lots. You have a typical lot and that is really truly just a mowed lawn usually. That's seventy-five percent. Almost fifteen percent has improved. So that's sometimes community members starting a garden or fencing that vacant lot. And then we have ten percent distressed at fifteen thousand parcels. Here's an example of improvements. Here's fencing and landscaping happening on a parcel here. And so this is a distressed and it has dense vegetation and fallen trees. This section is interesting. This is the cross-community commonality section. So we did take percentages from each variable and compare them to other communities. And this is this chart here. Cleveland Heights is the green dot. So we do see that they do have more instances of peeling paint, sidewalk, and lawn and landscaping than other communities. So those three variables do stand out. There is part of this process that I think does speak to this is how important it was for Cleveland Heights to have inspectors do their work from the sidewalk. A lot of other communities, they had people in cars that were moving through. So to be honest, I think Cleveland Heights surveyors took in more information because they kind of fought that weather, that winter weather. They were on the streets. So they did see more. Yeah, these sections talk about how this data can be used. Reducing tax delinquency, uses of payment. And this is the strategic initiative section where we talk about your community's role with citizen serve code enforcement. Single family zoning analysis. This is a map of the year structures were built. Yeah, this is provided by the Northeast Ohio First Source Consortium. So we give that link and then community members can go in there and get that information. Another section that's very important is the tree planting. That's close to our organization's art. So we talk about your designation for the health or healthy urban tree canopy grant. And then we've put CDC information aligned with the placement of the street trees. So this is something that you can actually go in and look at each census tract and then compare it to the street tree information as you zoom in.
Hey Adrian, close out the right box. Share.
And just for some housekeeping, I just wanted to let you know due to some limitations in Zoom, I sort of had to break up the Zoom meeting into two meetings. So in a few minutes, maybe about five minutes, we'll have to have Councilwoman Russell rejoin on a different Zoom meeting just so she can stay in the meeting. Alright.
Finally, we highlight vacant land reuse and innovative info strategies. Thank you so much, everyone. That's our story map and happy to take any questions.
Can you go back to the story map itself? Just because there might be specific questions from the mayor and his administration, members of council.
Yes.
Just pull up the grid map again.
Sure.
Mayor, turn it over to you.
Alright. So I know one of the things that I'm I'm interested in is sort of how this will relate to the public and having access to this. I know that this is up right now. And we can, I'm gonna I'm gonna send out an email sharing the link with council and and go from there. But you know, I also anticipate that we'll be putting this on our website and, you know, pointing people toward it. So the the general, you know, population of of Cleveland Heights can take a look at it and beyond. Maybe we can, you know, have developers have access to this as well so they can see what the what the state is of of the city's housing inventory and that kind of thing. How do other communities tend to use this kind of the story map and the the underlying information?
Great, great question, Mayor. All communities do it different. There's no standard approach. In 2015, our organization did the entire city of Cleveland, one hundred sixty-seven thousand parcels. At the time, then Mayor Jackson did not want the data available to the greater community. And so that was only accessible by the administration, members of council, and community development corporations. We upload all this data to Neo Can Do. I don't know if members of councils familiar with Neo Can Do. So that information is up there. It's available. If you have a .gov, .edu, or .org, you can have access through Case Western Reserves database. Some communities don't want the public to see it. Other communities want. So I think that's a decision that the leadership of this city should discuss and and figure out how you want to handle that.
Okay. Well, my expectation and my sort of default, I think, you can maybe inform me if you have a perspective on this as well, is that we would make it sort of generally accessible. We post a link and people able to take a look through it. Were we also looking at Regrid? I think this is, I don't I don't remember. If you could, if you guys can remember exactly what our conversation was about sort of how we make this probably be accessible.
Well, I thought maybe that's a good segue if you mean, because I know you have a link to Regrid at the beginning of the story map.
Yes.
Click on that link to.
Yeah.
To inform everyone.
But there have been past project partners who have actually gotten Regrid accounts to use.
Do you have, might have to log in on your account, Adrian? In order to.
Yeah, I think for each project does take a login.
Yeah, maybe let's not spend time on here and try to get in. Go back to the story map.
But yes, the Regrid is a great resource. And then, yeah, especially internally, so much filtering that can happen with the data set. So.
So I don't know why the data's not loading, but literally you could click on a parcel specific, it'll come up. It'll say Alan Butler's, you know, his house. And, you know, the drop down menu with the questions and how they were answered and the condition of the property. So it's that specific parcel specific.
I'm sure your property was an A.
The Zoom session to scroll in and and mouse around.
But Regrid is a is a better looking platform to be able to.
It is. It's much more user friendly and it's has, you can query certain data sets. You can check, you know, show me every F property and then it would aggregate that in a data set. Show me every property that has a fallen tree. I mean, you you can work it more than what what the story map allows you to do.
And it's similar to the capability of Neo Can Do as well.
It is.
One large data set.
Yeah.
So depending on how we want to present it to the public in a Regrid or right if if the public doesn't have access to Neo Can Do. Again, this this map is interactive. So you can touch on a parcel level and see the grades and, you know, just depending on how much information we want to provide.
Alright. I think maybe do do we have some time for some question answer sort of situation?
Move off good till four.
Okay. I wanted to open it up to to council members. That's why I'm I'm glad that you were able to join us today. I know that this is sort of an administrative meeting that we're in including you in. So I know we had we had some conversations about sort of what that means. We're gonna try to keep it sort of informational and less discussion. So if if council members have questions, start with the council president.
Well, we've been advised not to get into something where it's that and forth, you know, so it won't be considered a meeting. But I guess I would ask, could we possibly have a present? Because I'd like to look at this. I would zoom out of. Council members will like to look at it. I have a lot of questions that would require, you know, interaction. So could we do that at another time?
I think what 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 we envision is that this is sort of an introduction.
Right.
And I've sent you all the link to the story map. And if there's more information that we can send your way, what we want to do is give you a chance and give the public a chance to take a look at this. Pour through it, you know, get familiar with it and then come back with, you know, more questions than you might have immediately even today. And then and then ask those questions and we can go from there. And have and have the like a, if you want to invite Western Reserve Land Conservancy to a council meeting or to a committee meeting, you'll have some time to take a look at the system ahead of time. If you log into Neo Can Do and take a look at that data and develop some more questions. I mean, you might even answer some of your own questions before you get there. So that's sort of introductory now and then and then moving forward from there. Please feel free to to set up a time.
Definitely.
I know Vice President Russell had, you had a question earlier.
It was answered. Thank you.
Sure. Alright. Are there any more questions, not just from council, but okay, council?
From a statement. I remember whenever I saw the story map for the city of Cleveland and it was so cool. I remember spending so much time looking through it. And then whenever I heard that we were going to have that here in Cleveland Heights, I was over the moon. So thank you very much for taking time. Really appreciate it. I think that's going to be very valuable for the city.
Well, we, as I said, we've done over two dozen of these throughout the state of Ohio. And I will tell you that overall, the condition of the property in Cleveland Heights is very good. Better than most. And so you should be all very proud of the work that each of you are doing to help people. I know when I was on city council in in 2015, when I received that data set, I queried all the D and F properties and did outreach to residents and senior citizens. We're able to help them with free programs to fix their porch, do things, you know. Again, this is not a punitive approach. This is a proactive approach on how you can develop programs and policies internally that can really help people. And and so I'd encourage the members of council who represent or award base or even at large to kind of work with the administration and kind of take that approach.
Yeah, I'm so happy you found that story map. It's so dynamic. And I do need to say Tim Deam is a Cleveland Heights resident who created a lot of these visuals. So he wanted me to let everybody know. But this is, I'm so proud of the way that we allow access to these huge data sets. And I think this is such a dynamic way to do this. So.
Um, okay. Any other council member questions? Okay, I wanted to see if any, oh, yeah.
It's not a question. And maybe this is where you were going there. But I know one thing that we're curious about, I'm gonna put words in Alan's mouth, is comparing the Ds and Fs with what we presume are our worst properties. And are there any that we missed, I imagine? There might be one or two, but we're probably in in pretty much in alignment. So we want to do that analysis and that that can be part of that next discussion is, is there something that Western Reserve caught that we didn't for some some reason?
I think isolating those properties, the Ds and Fs, and then, you know, really having your inspection team. I don't want to make more work from the island. Really go out there and like almost give it a second check and a go around. And then, you know, make some recommendations on how you want to work towards improving and assisting those property owners.
Right. If I could say, we've we've taken the data set already and I've assigned the Ds and Fs to my property investigator who's. Right. If I could say, we've we've taken the dataset already and I've assigned the Ds and Fs to my property investigator who's
Oh, nice.
gone through them.
Perfect.
Um most of them, uh you know, we were already aware of.
Yeah.
I would say that it's probably lower now as as demolitions have happened or or the land banks have obtained those properties. And then working on, right, strategies on on how to get the rest of them. You know, the Cs, what type of communication we want to have with the Cs, right, um the vacant lots. It gives us a great opportunity to to look at these vacant lots and see how many we have, um what the condition of them is, and then how do we move forward with the with redevelopment of them?
Mm-hmm. Um Mayor, members of council, I would strongly encourage you to really be thinking about um whether it's us or somebody else, and there's not too many other organizations who do what we do. Um uh thinking about doing this in another three to five years. Uh we in twenty, I said, I told you we did the city of Cleveland in twenty fifteen and just completed the city in twenty twenty three. But in twenty eighteen, we did thirteen southeast side neighborhoods, some of them that are contiguous and touch to Cleveland Heights. And we were able to compare um the properties looking at fifteen, eighteen, and twenty three and how they've changed over time. Uh really helps you um again, think about the best assistance you can offer to those individuals.
Okay, well, I think, uh Councilman Patterson, yeah.
Um I would not be surprised if after this is made available to the public, that someone goes in, they take a look at their own property and they say, oh, I'm not sure that I agree with that. So is there some sort of way that you recommend that we handle people reaching out to us? Or is there some sort of way that you collect that feedback?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, this was an honest third party assessment of the real estate and that um um that uh I don't, you know, if somebody gets a B and they think their house is beautiful and pristine, you know, I mean, use your best job as a member of council to really make them feel right. Again, use words like this is, we're trying to be proactive, not reactionary. Too many cities often are complaint driven. Um your city is obviously not a complaint driven city. You're very proactive. So just those reassuring words um like that. They're not going to get a change in the grade or score to say, oh, let's reevaluate this. I mean, the work is done. But helping them feel good about that, ninety percent of this is communication. So it's, you're going to be really key to assuring uh constituents you represent.
And I'll say, I think in in addition, it'll be important for people to know that this is sort of a diagnostic. Um you know, it doesn't create the prescription. Um the that work is done through sort of the official channels of the city and code compliance, you know, issuing the citations that are warranted for specific considerations on the property. So people shouldn't look at this and say to themselves, oh, no, you know, this means that I have X violations. You know, those violations will be officially communicated from the city if they're warranted. And if they're, you know, if somebody gets cited for something that is incorrect, there's an avenue for that. Um but again, like like Mr. Zone said, this is something that's intended to allow us to strategize our enforcement and support. Um and and sort of where we're going to be focusing development activity. Um and and hopefully at in those places where it provides the greatest impact. And this is going to be helpful for that. So if anybody has any specific concerns about their property, you can reassure them, this isn't the mechanism. You know, the mechanism will be communicated to them, you know, in that official way if there's some actual problem um with the property that needs solved. Okay, alright, you had more?
You guys said what what I was trying to say, so instead of letting it all sound.
Alright, um well, unless, thi- this is relatively quick, then we made it uh in forty minutes. Um and so so this is an introduction. We'll be putting out more information about this process and talking about how this um informs our strategy moving forward. But we wanted to provide this introductory, um you know, informational session to allow people to get used to it and see the data. And um of course, we will be placing this on uh the city's website uh for people, the link on the city's website for people to see. And I think including it maybe in our our city news this week to, you know, let people know that they can check out our city in this way.
For sure.
Um now, real quick before we go, did staff have any other thoughts on this or questions or? I'm interested, okay. Alright, well, thank you all for joining us.
Yep.
Thank you so much um for being here. Um looking forward to the next steps.
Just wanna.